Well, um, there are four items for EMC. So, we have to...
Make sure that all reviewing audience gets an opportunity to see this. Let's grab the hands of our... We've got a very special recognition today, and I'm going to ask Terry Borbra to speak to it, and if you have some other folks that are associated, why don't we bring them up as well?
Well, it's our honor today to recognize the Corporation for Economic Development in Des Moines. The corporation is a private 501(c)(3) nonprofit that has a board of directors of eighteen members. It was incorporated to assist the city of Des Moines in its economic development efforts through small business development within the city back in June 9th of 1981. So they're coming up on their 30th year anniversary. Subsequently, they were also, in January of 1982, certified by the U.S. Small Business Administration as a certified development company and administer certain SBA programs within the city of Des Moines. It's my honor. We have a few of the board members here today I'd like to introduce. Make sure I get everybody correctly here. Brian Bond, who is the president of the CED Board this year. Ryan Boomer, who is with the Iowa State Bank. He's the East Des Moines Chamber representative. Jennifer Sayers is a business owner on the board with Beju Graphics. Jan Olson is a commercial lending officer, vice president of First National Bank of Omaha. And Ted Economist is with Bankers Trust, vice president of Bankers Trust. All of these individuals are individual board members. We also have our Iowa district director with the U.S. Small Business Administration, Joe Folsom with us today as well, and very intricately involved with small business development. Over the last thirty years, the Corporation for Economic Development also threw a 28E agreement arrangement with the city of Des Moines, administers several small revolving loan funds funded with community development block grant funds, and over the thirty years have assisted over 255 small businesses within the city of Des Moines, and using our CDBG funds as well as the SBA 504 loan, have helped in financing over $40.7 million in small business investments within the city, which have leveraged over $112 million, creating 1,980-some jobs within the city of Des Moines.
And I want to recognize all these individuals because I think that we all know that every business, whether it's General Hooters or GE, started out as a small business, really the heart of the future of the United States and certainly Des Moines and Iowa. And so thank you all for working so hard on business and small business and helping to make the lives easier for those that are getting into business or trying to keep a small business operating and maybe someday be one of our major employers right here in the city. And for all your efforts, we have a certificate of recognition presented to the Corporation for Economic Development in Des Moines in observance of the 30th anniversary of its ongoing mission to enhance economic development in the city of Des Moines through the development and expansion of Des Moines' small businesses. Small business plays a vital role in shaping the future of Iowa and the city of Des Moines by serving as the foundation and engine of growth for a healthy and prosperous economy. The more than 260,000 small businesses in Iowa, includes those in the city of Des Moines, are building tomorrow's economic economy today by creating two-thirds of all new jobs and leading in innovation and being the model of private initiative. And signed now by myself as the mayor and certainly within partnership with the city council and all the citizens of Des Moines, we thank you all for everything that you do, and let's keep small business vital. Appreciate it very, very much. Thank you. Let's get a picture so we can put it in the spotlight. Terry didn't want to have a microphone in his ears. Okay? Thank you. Lisa Hamilton, there you are.
I'm up here.
Absolutely, we can. Lisa, unless you want to, I've got a special proclamation. Let's just speak for a few minutes, but maybe the proclamation speaks.
I think it's good stuff. I just left me here on behalf of the staff and everyone else.
You bet. And Lisa is here for EMC, and this is a proclamation. Whereas EMC Insurance Company was founded 100 years ago in April 1911 by a group of Iowa businessmen as a mutual insurance company providing workers' compensation insurance to Iowa businesses. And whereas now the company provides prosperity and casualty insurance products and services throughout the United States and writes reinsurance contracts worldwide. And whereas the company has stood the test of time demonstrating strength, stability, services to policyholders, insurance agents, and employees. And whereas EMC is an integral part of the city of Des Moines with offices located downtown since its inception, having purchased its first property at 204 to 210 Seventh Street in 1937, and now owning the entire block between Walnut and Mulberry Seventh and Eighth Streets plus adjacent downtown properties. And whereas the company now employs more than 1,000 people in the corporate headquarters and branch office in Des Moines, and whereas for 100 years, customers have come to count on EMC for comprehensive protection, superior service, and financial stability. And whereas the company's board of directors and EMC employees will be celebrating the company's 100-year anniversary at a special event at the Civic Center of Greater Des Moines on May 25th. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our Des Moines City Council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 25th, 2011 as EMC Insurance Company's 100-year celebration day, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize EMC Insurance Company as being a committed, devoted corporate citizen of the city of Des Moines for more than 100 years. Lisa, thank you so much. Let's give her a great hand. Okay? All right. Look at this.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Welcome this afternoon, everybody, to the May 23rd Des Moines City Council meeting. We had a couple of great presentations early on with Corporation for Economic Development and celebrating EMC's 100-year anniversary. So congratulations to all of them. Prior to the starting of our official meeting, council member Bob Mahaffey has a few words, and those who would want to stand at this time, we'd ask you to do so.
I'm going to take my invocation from Meditations for Meetings by Edgar Stoes. You all join with me, with me, please. We acknowledge our shortcomings and failures. Give us the courage to embrace crisis as an opportunity for growth and understanding. Give us faith to make difficult decisions. Thank you for the strength to move forward. Amen.
All right. I'll ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, so we're now in session. Let's ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 47, and these are routine items that will be enacted await...
You need to start off.
No, that's all right. Let's get this done. Which are enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, council or public requests an item be removed to be considered separately. Tonight, the items that are on that consent agenda, item 4A, council member Hensley wishes to speak. Item 4Y, council members Meyer and Moore wish to speak. Item six, council member Moore and I vote no. Council member Moore is going to speak on 22, 34, and 41, and council member Hensley votes no on 43B and 43C.
Mayor, I withdraw from question number 22.
All right, and council member Moore withdraws number 22. Are there any other items that anyone would like to have pulled for further discussion in the audience's seat?
Mr. Mayor, is 47A going to be considered on this agenda?
Well, it'll be item through 47, so A is on the consent.
I'd like to speak.
You'd like to speak to 47A?
Okay.
So I have 47A from the audience.
I'll move the remaining.
Coleman?
I was just looking at something real quick.
Seven yes?
All right, I would ask everybody real quickly if we could recess city council and quickly adjourn as the municipal housing agency governing board and cover those items very quickly.
Move.
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes. Item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item four is approving the issuance of 50 project-based Section 8 vouchers and authorizing the housing service directors to submit a request to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for capital funding support of the energy efficiency rental units as part of the Central Iowa Shelter and Services Development Project, council communication or board communication number 11-316. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to that?
I would move this. Did Tony, did you want to say? I think it's a great thing that we're doing. It's creative. It comes out of the Homeless Coordinating Council recommendation that we put together to try and find the best way to help people get out of the state of homelessness, and this was the best way to fund an expanded shelter that provides new and different services. So I'll move it, and...
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item four is approving the issuance of 50 project-based Section 8 vouchers and authorizing the housing service directors to submit a request to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for capital funding support of the energy efficiency rental units as part of the Central Iowa Shelter and Services Development Project, council communication or board communication number 11-316. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to that?
I would move this. Did Tony, did you want to say? I think it's a great thing that we're doing. It's creative. It comes out of the Homeless Coordinating Council recommendation that we put together to try and find the best way to help people get out of the state of homelessness, and this was the best way to fund an expanded shelter that provides new and different services. So I'll move it, and...
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Enforcement Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
All right, welcome this afternoon, everybody, to the May 23 DeMoyne City Council meeting. We had a couple of great presentations early on with Corporation for Economic Development and celebrating EMC's 100-year anniversary. So congratulations to all of them. Prior to the starting of our official meeting, Councilmember Bob Mahaffey has a few words, and those who would want to stand at this time, we'd ask you to do so.
I'm going to take my invocation from Meditations for Meetings by Edgar Stoes. You all join with me, please. We acknowledge our shortcomings and failures. Give us the courage to embrace crisis as an opportunity for growth and understanding. Give us faith to make difficult decisions. Thank you for the strength to move forward. Amen.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, so we're now in session. Let's ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 47, and these are routine items that will be enacted await... No, that's all right. Let's get this done. Which are enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, council or public requests an item be removed to be considered separately. Tonight, the items that are on that consent agenda. Item 4A, Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak. Item 4Y, Councilmembers Meyer and Moore wish to speak. Item six, Councilmember Moore and I vote no. Councilmember Moore is going to speak on 22, 34, and 41, and Councilmember Hensley votes no on 43B and 43C.
Mayor, I withdraw from question number 22.
All right, and Councilmember Moore withdraws number 22. Are there any other items that anyone would like to have pulled for further discussion in the audience this evening?
Mr. Mayor, is 47A going to be considered on this agenda?
Well, it'll be item four through 47, so A is on the consent.
I'd like to speak.
You'd like to speak to 47A? Okay. So I have 47A from the audience.
I'll move the remaining.
Coleman?
I was just looking at something real quick.
All right, I would ask everybody real quickly if we could recess City Council and quickly adjourn as the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board and cover those items very quickly.
Move.
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. We now are in recess with City Council. We are sitting as the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board. I'll ask clerk to take roll for the governing board.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is the Municipal Housing Agency, number two, approving the submittal of the Housing Choice Voucher Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator Grant Application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Council Communication, number 11-317. Is there anybody here to speak on that item? Seeing none, that's a submittal. Could we have a motion?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The item passes unanimously. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program on the following. A is Bong Throng of 2704 57th Street. That was council or board communication, number 11-337. And B is Celestin Roberto Hernandez of 106 East 35th Street, board communication, number 11-336. Is there anyone here to speak on either one of those items?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Items pass. Item four is approving the issuance of 50 Project-Based Section 8 vouchers and authorizing the housing service directors to submit a request to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for capital funding support of the energy efficiency rental units as part of the Central Iowa Shelter and Services Development Project Council Communication or Board Communication, number 11-316. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to that?
I would move this. It's... Tony, did you want to say anything? I think it's a great thing that we're doing. It's creative. It comes out of the Homeless Coordinating Council recommendation that we put together to try and find the best way to help people get out of the state of homelessness, and this was the best way to fund an expanded shelter that provides new and different services. So I'll move it, and...
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the City Council?
Move.
It's been moved. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. We now sit as the DeMoyne City Council and adjourn as the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board. As was mentioned before, on our consent items, the first item is 4A. 4A is approving alcoholic beverage license applications for the following, and A is 101 Lounge at 102 Third Street. Mrs. Hensley.
I was brought to my attention today, I have had calls and complaints regarding some of the problems down in Court Avenue, and Chief Bradshaw has provided me with information on this particular operation. I'd just like to share that with the rest of the council because that'll be the basis for my recommendation. The previous owner recently paid a $500 settlement to the city for underage drinking. That was signed off on April 5th of this year. Lauren Gonzalez is applying for new ownership, and that's who the liquor license would be given to. Mr. Gonzalez has been employed at 101 Lounge as a manager for several months. He does have a felony history related to drug charges in 2002. On July 9th, Mr. Gonzalez had his citizenship rights restored. The 101 Lounge has received 84 police-related calls going back one year. January 2011, officers no longer worked the bar. Mr. Gonzalez met with Officer Bjornson over new ownership and has since rehired two officers at least one day through the weekend. I'm not comfortable moving this license application forward because the individual, it states in here that he's actually been a manager for several months, and what I've just related to you goes back for the last year. So I'm going to move that we deny this based upon the information coming from the police chief.
Okay, we have a motion to deny on 4A. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to 4A to rebut information that has been presented? Seeing none.
Move to deny.
To deny.
I'll support Christine's motion as the ward councilperson. I would be interested if, in the, you know, as we use that kind of data, to have comparable data to other institutions, just so we can see how out of line it is. I think last week we talked about, or two weeks ago, courtside, or the one over by East High.
Right, 14th, yeah.
We ended up allowing that under some terms, and the numbers were much less than this, but it's nice to kind of have some comparables.
Seven, yes?
Okay, the next item again is an alcoholic beverage license application for the Locust Tap at 434 East Locust Street for a C liquor license. It's temporary in conjunction with the Capital City Pride Celebration on June 11th and 12th, 2011, pending approval of the building, let's go fire, and zoning departments, and we have two councilmembers to speak to it. I think we'll start with the ward councilmember, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a situation where Locust Tap now, for several months, if not years, has completely disregarded any agreements they make. They are in constant violation of several ordinances and constantly thumbing their nose at the city and the people of the East Village, and I know there's people here to speak on it regarding this, and Skip, did you want to say something?
I'll just echo what Brian is saying, and I know that he and I have both received numerous emails in the past year about this location, and I'm going to support whatever motion Brian has tonight.
With that, Mayor, and I'd like to open it up to some comments.
Okay, and the motion would be to deny?
Well, the motion would be to deny the special permit, absolutely.
All right, do we have folks in the audience who'd like to speak to this? All right. Council this evening, you want to give two, three minutes each? How do you want to do it?
Two's fine. I think we can sum it up in two.
We'd ask that everybody that wishes to speak on this item to please come to the south side here of our chamber, and we'll ask our first speaker to introduce himself and give his name and address and give us your testimony.
Mayor, County, and councilmembers, my name is Carl Voss. I live at 323 East Fifth. I've lived in the, at that address for 11 years, even before it was known as the East I and several other neighbors since 2009 have logged several calls with the DeMoyne Police Department regarding noise ordinances at the Locust Tap. The owners of the property and the managers seem to disregard our calls. It would be as neighborly as closing the front door, and yet, as a neighborhood bar, they can't seem to respect the neighbors that live there. I actually bought a decibel reader, and I've been using that, and when I log my calls with the police department, I always note the DB readings, so... Anything, any ideas you might have on how to resolve this with the neighborhood would be really outstanding. We're not making any progress. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Howard. I live in the East Village at 507 East Locust, and I've been there five years, and it seems to me that the issues have escalated since the laws have changed about smoking inside. Oftentimes, we seek open containers outside Locust Tap. They're serving food and barbecuing. I don't know if that's legal, and the noise ordinance is just out of control. And it's been said, you know, they shout profanities at us at our windows at night because they know that our lights are on. That's happened to me on a number of occasions, and it's causing people in my building and over at East 5W that I also sell real estate and lease, people are moving. They say it's just too chaotic. They just can't live with it. So we can't get up, we can't sleep at night, and then get up and be productive the next day when they're out there screaming and carrying on until 2:00 in the morning, or later sometimes. So, yeah, if we could find a solution, we want everybody to have a win-win situation down there, but they're not team players, and they've made it very clear they're not intending to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm Marcia Steele. Thank you for, council, for hearing me. I'm Marcia Steele, President of Historic East Village, and I'd like to give historic perspective. We were voted into the board in June of '09, and we've, I've personally been receiving emails and phone complaints since that time. I approached Mr. Blunk about it, and in October of '09, he sent an email back saying that he was going to instruct his managers, and they would all be voluntarily closing the front door at 10:00 PM if that was helpful. They did so because the owner of Blazing Saddle had also made that offer. But since October of '09, it's been in a constant state of flux. It is not consistent, and he is not a good neighbor in the East Village where noise is concerned, and I've said that to him, and it doesn't seem to matter. These are the people on the front lines, and Lisa failed to mention a couple of things because we're trying to be brief. One of them, we have the principal park, and lots of the ballplayers come and rent for the season down in the East Village, and after one or two evenings, a ballplayer this season called Lisa and broke the lease because he was moving his wife and his new baby up, and after the one night that he was there, he knew that they wouldn't possibly be able to sleep or habit the East Village loft, so they broke their lease and went out to West Des Moines. I also want to bring up St. Patrick's Day this year. It was a lovely day, and there were lots of complaints I know that the chief had to deal with downtown. Lisa tried to be proactive and began calling about 11 o'clock and 11:00 AM because there were open containers, visible, open containers, outside Locust Tap. She called again sometime around 1:00. There was too much police activity. No one came to respond to that. Lisa placed those calls because last year, with that precursor, there were fights by the end of the evening at Locust Tap, out in the street. There are lots of issues, and we hope that you can be helpful in helping, as Brian said, to at least open a discussion, make awareness, and maybe start changing behavior. That's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, restating some of the things that have happened, this is not a spur-of-the-moment thing. We have asked, or the Neighborhood Association and neighbors have asked several times for Locust Tap to work with them, to make sure that they're able to live with what's going on down there. Any agreements that they've made, any attempts that the neighbors have made to enforce those agreements have gone by the wayside. So I don't want people to think that this is something we take lightly, objecting to this permit, but clearly, we need to send a message that this cannot continue to go on, and it cannot go on through the rest of the summer, and this will be the first shot across the bow, and if it continues, we'll take more proactive steps to make sure that these noise ordinances and other ordinances are complied with down there. And again, I want to thank the folks that showed up tonight, and I look forward to, if we need to have a neighborhood meeting, I think that we should have a neighborhood meeting. And two things to add to the, to the motion then would be to have the city manager's office work with the Neighborhood Association to set up that meeting with all of the business owners and the neighbors, and make sure that we all get together and understand what, how this is going to go down this summer and moving forward. In addition, I'd ask that the PD Police Department take a close look and watch if this does go down tonight, that they're not violating the bootlegging statutes or ordinances in the city by actually selling. And thirdly, that we actually proactively contact Locust Tap to make sure that they understand that they have been denied, because this is sort of a routine permit to approve, but if it does go down tonight, that we do those additional three things. So that's the motion. Move to deny.
I will say, as I'm voting, I certainly support the efforts of our councilpeople to look after the rights of our citizens, and I think it's the right of reasonable enjoyment of their property and privacy that we're talking about, and certainly, we want to respect the rights of the businesses, but we have to respect the rights of our residents down there, and certainly, that's part of the life down there to have, you know, sort of an active urban lifestyle. But, you know, when it's happening into later hours of the night and into the early morning, I don't think that's reasonable anymore, so I appreciate your, the councilman's work on this, both Skip and Brian.
I agree. I'm voting yes. If the neighborhood meetings and there's consensus in a sense that they're going to be more neighborly, I would welcome a chance to revisit their special application.
And I don't, I don't want to, again, I don't want to leave the impression I'm taking this lightly. We've tried for a year and a half, two years, to resolve this issue. It's all for naught, and this, like I said, is the first step if we need to come together and work with everybody.
Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, but I believe that the NBSD officer made contact with all these establishments within the last few weeks to remind them that their agreement was to keep the doors shut after a certain time, and, you know, if they're going to thumb their nose at the police department, they're going to thumb their nose at anybody, so I think this is a good warning shot.
All right.
Seven, yes?
Thank you. Appreciate all of you coming down.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us to item 34, which is a memorandum of agreement with ICLI Local Governments for Sustainability USA, Inc., for the Star Beta Communities Program for $25,000. This has been on our agenda previously, but I think now we are moving to the actual appropriation stage. If we were in Washington, I think that that's what we would be talking about. So council communication number 11-326. Mr. Moore.
Mayor, I'd just like to point out that there were nine other cities picked by ICLI for this, and I just wanted to read them real quick. Atlanta, Georgia, Austin, Texas, Boulder, Colorado, Chattanooga, Tennessee, King County, Washington, New York, New York, St. Louis, the District of Columbia, and Cranberry Township, PA. I think this is some pretty awesome company that were joining on this, and I know that the mayor has been working hand-in-hand with ICLI, and I would like to commend the mayor and any staff that worked on it, on this grant, to get this moving for us.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I'll move 34.
All right, the next item that's been asked to be pulled for discussion is item 41, which is a Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant Consortium Agreement relating to the HUD grant to the DeMoyne Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO. Council Communication, number 11-339. Mr. Moore.
This is another environmental issue, and I'm very pleased that the MPO was awarded the $2 million federal grant, and I'm very pleased that the city of Des Moines' portion of the match will be an in-kind contribution. However, I talked to the Assistant City Manager today about this issue, and there is a little bit of disappointment, not about this, but several months ago, it was suggested that city staff take a week-long school at the National Conservation Training Center on green infrastructure. They've got the definition of green infrastructure up here. A lot of people, you know, I thought when I went out there for my classes, I thought, well, you know, they're just going to be teaching about planting trees along streets and streets and stuff like that. That is not what it is. It turned out that no city staff attended the conference the week of April 15th. However, there's been another one scheduled for September, and I would hope that staff is identifying who will be attending that now. We're four months away, ensuring, you know, we don't want people scheduling vacation or something. We're asking them to go out to the National Conservation Training Center. So I hope that we're moving on identifying the proper staff to go to that, and that as this project moves along, green infrastructure is a huge part of this, that they will be able to talk with some intelligence with other people about this, and I do think we can take a lead on it, and...
Skip, I just want to add to that. I think part of it is everybody knows that, not only at the table up here, but our staff, we are working feverishly to deal with flood risk problems, and this conference, among other things, deals with reducing flood risk and improving water quality, which we know all up and down, not only the Des Moines River Basin, but the Raccoon River Basin. These are hugely important issues for the city of Des Moines and all of our neighbors as the future moves ahead, and we have to deal with certain changing circumstances that is causing higher river flows in both basins. So, Skip, thanks for bringing it up.
I'll move 41.
All right, the next item, which was asked to be pulled by a member of the audience, is item 47A. Item 47 is amending Chapter 10 of the Municipal Code Regarding Class E Liquor Licenses. Amendment required due to the recent state code changes. A is initiating amendment to the zoning ordinance to further regulate the allowed location of businesses engaged in the sale of alcoholic liquors for off-premise consumption and imposing a temporary moratorium on the commencement of any such business in the C1 Neighborhood Retail Commercial District and at any location which has not received conditional use approval from the Zoning Board of Adjustment. We have a member of the audience that would like to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Joel Houston. I'm an attorney for Come and Go and a member of the Des Moines Planning and Zoning Commission, so it's strange for me to be on this side of the podium. Speaking tonight, I'm speaking as an attorney for Come and Go, and this proposed moratorium concerns us because we've recently been allowed to finally get a Class E liquor license due to the change in state law. And I just have really three essential points that I'd like to address, and the first one is that a moratorium essentially punishes responsible retailers such as Come and Go, Casey's Get and Go, other convenience store chains that have been selling beer and wine without incident, or for the large part without incident. wine, um, without incident, or for the large part without incident. And now, we should be able to sell liquor as well. Um, you know, this, I understand, at least I think I understand the city's concerns, but right now, um, I think that the city has other police powers that they can exercise if, uh, a holder of a Class E liquor license is, um, violating the liquor license laws. A blanket moratorium against issuing any new liquor licenses to those of us that are now finally able to get them seems to be overkill to me. Um, the second point is that we just amended the municipal code to redefine what a grocery store is with the 60%, uh, 60% of merchandise sale excluding, uh, well, it's...
Food as opposed to liquor.
There you go. I forgot how the statute was written. We just did that six months ago, and so I'm questioning why a moratorium needs to be issued when we already have, uh, this restriction in place. Um, and finally, is the biggest concern is that any moratoriums in violation, or it contradicts state law. Our state just gave us the right to get a Class E liquor license, and now that right is taken away from us. So, those are my concerns, and I thank you for your time.
All right. I'm going to open that up for any comment from our council members. Ms. Hensley?
Um, we at the council two weeks ago had quite a lot of discussion on this particular item and gave direction to the staff to go back and look at what would be some of the things that we could do to ensure that, from my perspective, that I don't have a liquor store in every single corner in town. And that's what is coming.
Sure.
So, we have asked the staff to look at what would be some of the recommendations and how we might position ourselves to make sure that we had some control and we could give some direction. So, that's what we're going through the process and doing. We have, uh, the second reading is tonight, including the moratorium, to ensure that we have that information that comes back to us before we take the third and final reading. And the 78 days, I'll look to legal as to how we came up with 78 days. I'm assuming that we looked at the council agenda or calendar to determine what we needed and...
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, is it likely that it might come back before the 78 days?
It's possible that it could come back before...
Just giving us some wiggle room here.
It's possible that it could come back. It's possible that at least a recommendation or determination will come back. Uh, just to address a couple of points quickly that council made, um, the 60-40 rule, uh, that you're talking about, just happened six months ago. That happened when there was no authority for gas station licenses to sell. So, I don't think that really, uh, that really washes with that argument. And to the extent that you're, uh, talking about, um, the violating the state law, uh, moratorium is not in place to say that you can't ever have a liquor license. It's just to allow us to determine, uh, allow the city to determine whether or not the zoning, um, is appropriate and whether or not we have appropriate zoning restrictions. Uh, it's not an impact on the Class E license and what establishments necessarily will be licensable under state law. And state law, as you know, gives the citywide latitude in determining whether or not and where the sites are that are appropriate. And that's all the moratorium is designed to do, and it's designed to do it as quickly as we can.
Well, and I understand that the timing issue as far as council meetings and everything goes, that I guess our biggest concern with the moratorium is that puts us just a little over a month past when we would be able to sell liquor, assuming that we were able to obtain a Class E liquor license, which I think is July 1st. So, for anything that we could do in order to assist, uh, staff and, and the council in drafting an acceptable regulation that really benefits the city and the convenience store industry, you know, I'd be happy to do that. I volunteer myself as well. I'm sure that everybody else in the industry would be happy to participate in that process.
You might want to pause a minute before you write a code when you're on P and Z and be part of it and then have to exercise, but that's just another issue.
I recognize that. When I say I, I mean Come and Go.
Okay. We appreciate your, your offer. Um, the only thing I'll add to what Mrs. Hensley has already stated is that I think we have a number of issues surrounding liquor sales in and around Des Moines and downtown and lots of other areas, uh, a couple of which were just presented earlier, uh, regarding sales from bars, but that's a separate issue. And I think that we want to better understand the full issue and the implications of the new law that you're suggesting is going into effect, uh, in areas of concern for us. And I think that we're waiting for staff to give us that, uh, recommendation. Appreciate your offer to help us out, and we may just take you up on that. Anybody else have anything that...
I, uh, at one time, we talked about the size of containers. Can we limit that they have to be larger than a certain size, rather than a small bottles? The other thing is, I like to have, uh, specific distances which be, uh, from schools that they're selling.
Uh, the, um, particular bottle is a, uh, is a problem because of the state licensing, but we're working on that. Uh, and with respect to, um, the distances, that, again, is something that the moratorium is designed to, um, be able to, to look at and, and review and make a recommendation back to council.
Skip for howie?
Joel, I'm curious. Just as you leave Interstate 35 entering Clear Lake, I believe there's a Come and Go there.
I believe you're right.
Have you got a liquor license there?
Um, I, I don't know. I don't know if we have one yet. I think we've, I think we've probably applied for it, but I'm, this is not my area of expertise.
Have you got any other stores in the Des Moines area that aren't in Des Moines?
Well, again, we've, we've just started the application process with this.
They have 14 pending in Des Moines.
I don't think, I don't think we have 14.
That's what the staff has.
For Come and Go?
Yes.
That's surprising. I didn't think we had 14 stores.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Howie?
I guess the only thing I would add is, I think it would be helpful if legal talked with Come and Go and some of the other interested parties as you go and kind of explain where you're headed ahead of time, just so they can understand the process and kind of be on board as the process moves forward.
But we'll do that, we'll do that in conjunction with the city manager's office.
Thank you.
I'll move 47. 47A.
All right. That completes the consent agenda, and probably we should move straight to hearings, which is item 52. Uh, item 52 is, so we'll note that we opened the hearings at 5:07. Uh, item 52 is items regarding the expansion of Kemmon Industries, Inc. and the Kemmon Corporate Campus. Council Communication number 11-333A is a hearing on the proposed urban renewal development agreement with Kemmon Industries, Inc., proposed vacation of portions of Scott Avenue and Southeast 20th Street, proposed sale and conveyance of such vacated right-of-ways, together with additional city-owned land north of Scott Avenue between Southeast 20th and Southeast 22nd Street to Kemmon Industries, Inc., and on the proposed rezoning of all such land, together with additional land north of Scott Avenue, uh, between Southeast 19th and Southeast 20th Street, from M1 light industrial to M2 heavy industrial for an expansion of the Kemmon Home Office Research and Manufacturing Facilities. B is to receive and file the recommendations for the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the proposed street vacations and rezoning. C is receive and file the recommendations from the Urban Design Review Board regarding the level of financial assistance funded from tax increment revenues. D is the first consideration of the ordinance vacating portions of Scott Avenue and Southeast 20th Street. E is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Kemmon Industries, Inc., requires six votes. F is the first consideration of the ordinance rezoning the proper property described above, from the M1 light industrial to M2 heavy industrial. G is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver, again, is requested by Kemmon Industries and requires six votes. And I is a request from Anthony Holt of 607 Southeast 21st Court to speak regarding timing of the vacation of Scott Street. Um, I think that, uh, we will ask, is there anyone in the audience to speak on these items?
Maybe we should go directly to I.
Yep, I think so. If nobody has anything else, we'll go right to I.
Tony Holder, Anthony Holt, 607 Southeast 21st Court. I wonder if I could just use the camera?
Yep.
Please. Where I have my pen is the portion of land that we, I own, and the, uh, street that proposing to vacate is right here. This is currently our access to our property. You can see it's a paved street looking to the east. Our property is just beyond the railroad tracks that a truck is. Southeast 22nd Street, if this is vacated, would be our exit, our only interest exit. This is what Southeast 22nd Street looks like. There's considerable water around it. It's in a 100-year flood plan on the current record. I think when it's updated, the whole area will be in 100-year, unless, of course, would be greater than that.
Anthony, this is your residence here?
This is a proposed business premise.
Okay.
Um, it's a premise that we acquired because it was on the DNR's cleanup site. We're in a roll-off business, and the owner did not pay us. So, we, uh, made an agreement to take the land over at the first of year. Um, we've since spent about $50,000 cleaning it up, and, um, we'd like to use it as a construction lot. I'll just put on...
As a construction what?
Construction lot.
A construction lot, okay.
This is Kemmon's five-year plan. Um, I'd like to definitely say that I appreciate everything that they're doing to develop this, and I think it definitely should go forward. And I support it, and I think by cleaning up the land that we did next to them was a help to them because of the, uh, you might say rat hole that it was. Um, and I'd only ask for the sacrifice of what we did is, if we could keep the road open until the connector's put through.
Would you put your finger on where your property is?
Are you?
Oh, right there.
Oh, okay.
And as you can see, there is several semi-traders and several hundred tons of debris on this piece of property. If you look at the green road, you'll see that there's, there is some parking that they propose on. Otherwise, the road seems to stay intact. The only other comment is, I understand on your number 12, you've allotted funds to work on this southeast connector. Um, and as you can see, 22nd Street, the road we showed you with the water and road is on in a future time to be developed and go underneath the new southeast connector. And I'm assuming that there'll be some earth and a need to access this.
Anthony, how many acres do you have there?
It's approximately two acres.
Okay.
Ultimately, Mr. Holt, what are you trying to, what's your goal, what's your end game on this piece of property, then?
We'd like to develop it into a building site when the connector's through.
When you say building site, what does that mean?
We would put in a, a building and put in our, some of our operations there. We currently, as a family, have several operations through the city.
And are, is that a, is that tires?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, we have, the Holt's do own tire shops. We do have Des Moines Feed Company and, um, a few other...
You own Des Moines Feed Company?
I don't, but the family does. Let's not confuse, confuse the family with just me. The only businesses that I own is the roll-off.
Okay.
Roll-offs and available material handling. We do forklifts and material handling.
Well, here's what I'm thinking on this entire thing. This is a really important, uh, proposal that we're working with. Um, what I'd like to do is move, well, let me just see if it's still open for anybody else wants to speak. I'd...
I'd like to thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thanks.
Anthony, thank you.
Tony?
Yes?
You don't happen to own the roll-off company that's just south of there and across the street, do you?
No, I do not. That's...
Okay.
Um, economy roll-off.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like to, to note to the council that this piece of property, as long as I remember, was a rat hole. I wondered why it was getting cleaned up. But as a 35-year employee of the city, I traveled that street during floods, and I don't recall it ever being flooded. And I know that I can't make that guarantee to you, but if, I think if that's your worry, um, we might be able to work with Public Works. It's, it's only a block too long, just elevate the street enough that it never would flood.
Well, what I, what I, what I'd like to do, and Terry, I have some questions for you, too. Uh, I think the motion's going to be to, you know, move A through G, uh, but have the city manager's office, economic development, and Public Works work with your needs and possibly create an easement or something. We can't hold up sort of vacating the street for the connector. It's just, it's going to take a while to get there, and we can't hold this up for that. But I'd, I'd like to explore the option of possibly doing some kind of easement or working with you on your needs and still moving forward on this project. Uh, that will end up being my motion, but I have some questions for Terry.
Like you say, we're years away from, uh, southeast connector down in that area. Right now, we've only got money to East 14th, and we're just starting to look at down to 30th.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we're, okay. Terry, is there, um, question H? Is there, is there a reason we eliminated the urban renewal agreement approval?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, uh, members of city council, Terry Vorbrick with the city's office of economic development. We postponed approval of the final urban development, or urban renewal development agreement until June 13th. Some issues came up with regard from Kemmon, with regard to potential, uh, environmental concerns on the site that they're purchasing from the city, asbestos, some BCPs, uh, from, uh, just some concerns. They want to do some additional investigation. And so, we don't, we anticipate that fully going forward.
That'll come back to us at some...
On June 13th.
Okay, very good. Uh, did you have anything else?
Well, what I was going to say, this is a, a map of the current conditions. As Mr. Holt has talked about, you can see Southeast 22nd Street, right here, is unimproved, as he's shown. Uh, I did visit with Public Works, and as you know, our Public Works, we have a number of field services located up here that are being relocated for the Kemmon expansion. Uh, during the high-water times of 2008 and 2010, Southeast 22nd was never closed. Uh, Public Works went back in their records, and their records indicate that we've never shut it down, as we have some other, uh, streets in and around the area due to high water and overland flows. Uh, it always has been, uh, open and accessible. Uh, from the standpoint of Mr. Holt, uh, he has, uh, this site that he's acquired, uh, was under action from the DNR, uh, as an illegal dump. Uh, he has gone in there and has started to clean it up, uh, which we applaud his efforts. Uh, that's been a, a longtime, uh, eyesore, and it's also been an issue for Kemmon. That's been a longtime eyesore and it's also been an issue for Keeman because of just unsightliness and, and wildlife that have been coming in and out of there. With regard, with regard to an easement though, part of the reason, as you can see, this, this overlay is not very clear, but Scott Avenue between the railroad tracks and southeast Twentieth will actually be incorporated into their overall campus and will be part of the circulation. We do have, this is a staged development where the Public Works has relocated in this area right here. Will start redevelopment, new construction this year. They are already expanding a warehouse, distribution warehouse at this location on their own property. And for security purposes, they will be closing off the, the railroad crossing. So, from the standpoint of, of their processing and their various certifications, they need to be able to have site control of the entire area. We are providing the property in a phased development as we relocate different city services, which are being relocated because of the southeast connector project as it goes through. And so, quite frankly, the, they will be constructing in and around that vacated portion of Scott Avenue, starting shortly.
Here's, here's what I'd like to propose then, and leave specific language of an easement out, but to, you know, and, and if this is, this is an urban renewal, right, this district?
Yes.
We can work with him on economic development issues. We can work with him on many of these things that we're talking about. So, I guess to amend the previous statement on the motion would be to do everything here, but to have the City Manager's Office work with their departments to aid Mr. Holt in trying to figure out a solution to his concerns without holding up the project. You know, I, I, I think there's things we can do to help him. I, I don't know the specific things we can do, but...
Right. Well, southeast Twenty-second does connect down here to Maury and there is controlled access across Maury back east and west. And Maury is a paved road.
Okay.
And as, as you saw with the map for the southeast connector, southeast Twenty-second, once the connector goes through, will become an improved street, going all the way up to Nor, up to Market Street as well as connecting to the southeast connector.
Okay. That answers my questions.
Thank you.
Hey, I'd like to speak on that for a second.
All right, now, I'm going to ask if there's anybody else that wants to speak on this item, that they would come up now and we're going to let you go ahead and speak, but it, it...
It'll take me just two seconds.
Please. Give us your name and address.
You know me as Thomas Hayes, head of CPAC, but I also am the co-chair of the Enterprise Zone Commission. And this was not brought to our attention when we approved this project, but I will know, let you know, as my experience working for the city for 16 years, that that road, it does not flood, but during the rain, it becomes mush. So, in Anthony's defense here, maybe something could be done with the road to improve it, add some material to it or something. So, if you could work with Public Works. It does have access from Maury, but it does turn into mush when it does rain.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to let, let you know that.
Thanks, Thomas.
Thanks.
If you could give us your name and position, please.
It's Pat Cosette, Deputy Public Works Director for the City of Des Moines.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to just comment on the southeast Twenty-second Street. As Councilman Moore knows and as Mr. Hayes knows, that has been used as a secondary exit out of our 2100 Scott site there for all the years that we've been there. It's served very well. It is an unimproved roadway, about 1,000 foot long, about 20, 22 foot wide. It will get some ponding on the edges. When it rains, there's a lot of roads that have temporary ponding, but there are areas where it drains off on the sides into wetland areas. As an unimproved roadway, we gravel and grade as needed to keep it open and that's what we'll continue to do.
Okay.
Even when you're not there?
I'll, I'll have Mr. still follow up on that.
All right. You're in charge tonight. All right. Any other questions? Right.
Uh, the motion would be to move 52, 52 A through G as written and then refer 52 I to the City Manager's Office to see if we can address some of Mr. Holt's concerns. So, with that, I'll move it.
Thank you.
And, and can somebody get with Mr. Holt and explain what we just did and give him contact information?
Seven yes?
All right. Item 53 is an appeal from Quee Deng of 431346th Street regarding a recommended denial of
I got two things to say to folks. One is, one is license, hire me if I get a license. Company, taxi company, hire me if I get a driver license from here. And number two is, because I need a job, I support my family. I've been, I've been laid off one and a half years and so I have only one income and I have six children waiting for me at home. So, I ask you folks, please help me to find, get a license to, to find a job.
Okay, can I ask you a couple other quick questions? What, who is the taxicab company that has offered to give you a job if you get a license?
Cop, uh, Capital City Company.
Capital City?
Yeah.
Cab?
Why was it denied? Criminal trespass?
Police in here that's going to tell us.
Yeah. Like I said, I feel sorry myself and I done a wrong thing like that and I been almost four years, I didn't do anything wrong after that. My driving record's very clear and good.
Okay. Go ahead.
You have a C license currently, is that correct? Okay, and...
CDL.
A CDL, right.
CDL.
Okay.
So, that's all I can say.
What were the circumstances surrounding the criminal trespass?
Oh, I go to Prairie Meadows and, and I signed up myself.
You did what? I'm sorry.
I signed up myself. I don't, I told you the Prairie Meadow Company, I, I tell them, I promise I don't go out there anymore for gambling. And then...
Oh, it's, oh, okay, you, you self-banned from gambling?
Yeah.
At Prairie Meadows and you violated that by going out there?
Yes, sir, because I didn't hurt any, anybody.
Oh, okay, that's why I wanted to make sure it wasn't a, some other situation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, folks, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Officer, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the only thing I have to add was, it was a criminal trespass back in 2007 that was initiated by the Polk County Attorney's, or I'm sorry, Polk County Sheriff's Office. It was created on 7/9/2007 where Mr. Deng admitted his guilt on 7/17/2007.
And was it as he characterized it? He, regarding the gambling, he had signed off to not enter and then he went out there anyway?
That information I didn't have access to. I was able to go to Iowa Courts Online to do the background to find out what the disposition of the case was. In terms of the report itself, since it was generated, generated by Polk County Sheriff's Office, I didn't have access to that prior to the meeting.
Okay. For me, I'd like to know what it was, if it's what he says it is. And was it four years ago?
Yeah, it was 7/9 of 2007.
Okay.
Anything since that time that you found?
No, sir.
Can we have the gentleman come back up? And could, could you just kind of speak to why you were originally kicked out of Prairie Meadow? I mean, what, what the limitation was that they didn't allow you back?
It was a self-ban.
Uh...
Was it a self-ban? You banned yourself?
Yes, self-ban, yes, self-ban myself, yeah. And then I go out there and I watch the horses and, and at, at July, July 4th, I took my family and...
So, you were watching the horses on, on the fly?
Yeah, and then I go inside, get some drinks and they caught me right there.
Okay.
And you haven't been back out to Prairie Meadows since?
No.
Just making sure.
That, I guess that doesn't strike me as a huge red flag in my mind and I would be, be willing to recommend approval reversal based on that, subject to him getting the correct, I believe he needs a different driver's license to operate a cab. And also, he mentioned that he has a job pending with Capital Cab. And if we could check that and make sure that that's accurate.
I think the other thing that we've done when we've had, when we've overturned the recommendation is to do it on a six-month probation. So, if we could make it, set it up on a six-month probation pending confirmation that you have the employment with the cab company. And Mayor, you wanted, did you want the additional information or is that adequate?
I, I, whatever's in the motion, I did, I just felt like I'd like to have it. I, I trust that he's, he's telling us what the facts are, but it'd be nice to substantiate...
Do you have any paperwork on your, do you have any paperwork on your criminal trespass?
No, I didn't have it with me right now. I got some from...
I'll get this right back.
The motion could be maybe made on the probation, subject to receiving documentation?
Yep. This is not, this is not documentation on the criminal trespass. I would support a motion, a reversal if his story checks out on the criminal trespass. If you can get his information from Prairie Meadows or doing your, your, your criminal record, you see what I'm saying? If, if your story checks out, I, I can support that. If we can somehow make a contingent on his, the criminal trespass being with Prairie Meadows.
Okay.
So, that'll be my motion, is that clear as mud?
Yep, it's absolutely crystal clear.
Seven yes?
Before they all check out, here we have a, some guys from Boy Scouts, right? Do you have one person who would like to quickly tell us what, what group you're with and what you're doing here tonight?
We're Troop 36.
I'm sorry?
We're Troop 36.
Yeah?
And, um, drive citizen and they ship back.
And what area of town are you from?
Des Moines.
I'm sorry, where?
Your district.
St. Augustine's.
St. Augustine's, okay. That's what we're just trying to figure out.
Okay. Well, congratulations, everybody, and we hope you had a great experience down here watching city government at work. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I, Gary, can you just make contact and get him your information so he can get his criminal information to you before they leave?
Okay. That takes us to item 54 on the appeal of Curtis Callison of 2108 63rd Street Windsor Heights regarding an administrative hearing officer's decision on an impounded vehicle.
Is it, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As the transcript states, I was staying at a friend's house while my wife and I are getting a divorce. And after being there for two weeks, I had a vehicle towed and I drive the vehicle daily for work. This transcript, transcript also notes that. I came out on the 15th, my vehicle was gone. I was very happy to find that the Des Moines police had it. They took good care of it. The matter at hand is not that I was parked there for more than 24 hours. Right now, I'm here to appeal the impound and the process that was taken for impounding it. The officers, Officer Stroup said that there is no actual code or article for giving you a warning. It's up to each officer's discretion to put a warning tag on. You see the bright red or orange stickers on the window that, as I understand, are very hard to get off. He said that it was up to his discretion if he should put that on there or not. But on digging a little bit, I find that there's a section here under the city code or municipal code that says that whenever a motor vehicle without a driver is found parked or stopped in violation of any of the restrictions imposed in this chapter, so on, so on, the officer or designated city employee finding such vehicle shall take its registration number and may take any other information displayed on the vehicle which may identify the owner or user and shall conspicuously affix to such vehicle a citation complaint in writing on a form as provided by section 114485.04 of this article. For the owner to appear in the charge against him or hurry at the city council, city clerk's office and in the county district, basically they, you have set in place a warning sticker. So, if the vehicle was suspected of being parked there for more than 24 hours, they have a process for putting a warning sticker on there. No warning sticker was put on there. I had driven the vehicle four hours before it was impounded. I paid the towing fee and the impound fee and the only thing I can figure out that I'm guilty of is being from Windsor Heights. I have since moved back home and the vehicle, the officer said it wasn't parked illegally. It was just, he said it had been abandoned there for two months. He also stated that the transcript will show that he stated that it was parked up on a curb, which it was not. He stated it was a brand-new curb, they're replacing curbs in that area, which it was not. It's 200 yards to the newest curb. He said that the curb where my car was was eight inches. Well, the curb's about that, that tall and is still to this day. He stated that he chalked the curb behind my tire, but not my tire. And I make sure that I park in a very specific spot there because there's driveways all along there. It's a very busy street. I don't want to block, I did not want to block driveways or park under the tree because the birds have their way with my windshield otherwise. And so, I line up with a, I look down the side of a neighboring house, make sure I'm in the same spot while I was there so that it seemed like a good spot. But I, I'm not sure what the officer saw, maybe another vehicle further up the street that had been abandoned there for several months. I'm not sure.
What was the address of this?
It was 1503 48th Street, Des Moines.
Now, we have a letter that indicates that you were found not liable for the charges, costs and fees attributable to, attributable to impound and storage of the vehicle.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so what are you asking for? Because they've been...
That was, then I have a letter here that says that I asked, how do I get my money back? And they said, you send in the receipts that, for everything. And I said, the receipts that you gave me at the city clerk? And they stated, yes. So, I made copies of those, sent them back into the city clerk. And then they sent me amended letters that said that they now are, have amended it and I'm once again guilty of the towing fees and everything and that I have to pay the parking ticket and the towing fees. And if I want to appeal this process, I had to appeal it, which I've done. And they said, I need to come here and appear before the city council.
So, what happened with the first letter that said that he was not liable for those costs and they were to be refunded and the time that he gets a letter saying, for the very same incident, that he now has to pay them? Can somebody explain that?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Thank you. What happened in this particular instance was that the hearing officer entered her initial order after a little, a bit of time had gone by, but not much, on her own motion. She entered what is called an order nunc pro tunc, which basically obviated the prior ruling and she determined that she had applied the incorrect standard. She had applied a standard of whether or not, by the preponderance of the evidence, the officer was justified in, in having the vehicle towed. And the correct standard is actually whether or not the officer had probable cause to... actually whether or not the officer had probable cause to tow the vehicle. And she determined that under the second standard, that the officer had probable cause. And that's, when she did that and sent that out, then the money was again owed, and she did that on her own motion, as is evidenced by the, the second order. And that's, the appeal is now before the council determined whether or not there was probable cause.
Was, Jeff, can you assure us from anything you know, that even though it was done on her own, that it was done on her own without pressure from an outside?
I'm, I'm, I'm sure she, she put right in the order that it was on her own motion, and that she had made that determination on her own. I'm not aware of anybody contacting her whatsoever. Certainly no one from, from my office did, and I'm not aware of anybody else doing that. And, and I would take her at face value that she made that determination on her own.
I appreciate your statement to that.
And what's the total dollar amount that we're talking about? $15 plus towing, what was that?
Uh, the ticket that I haven't even begun to appeal is $15, which I haven't paid because of the appeals. The impound fee was $20, and the towing fee is $57 some cents, approximately $60, which I have paid.
So is that like $85 or something like that?
Approximately, yes.
Well, counsel?
Did we-
Is there any additional information, officer, that we ought to know about here? Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sounds like he was able to provide witness that the vehicle had been driven before. The officer testified that instead of marking the tire, which is normal habit, that he marked the curb, which is not what we teach. The administrative law judge spoke of him testifying into the vehicle being parked in a, basically a general area of where that mark was. So I guess I leave this information up to you as to what you want to do with it. Okay. Any other questions, any council members?
I don't have any questions. I would just make a motion to overturn and to refund him the funds based upon the information that I think he was able to confirm that the car had not been there for extended periods of time, as had been indicated during the testimony. That would be my motion.
I, I would agree with you with the officer's explanation of what, how it could have been in error, yeah.
So we're gonna, we'll over, we're gonna support his appeal?
Yes, and refund him the funds.
All right.
Miss the ticket as well and save him that appeals process?
That's included in the motion?
Yes.
I'll, I'll support it, and I, I appreciate everybody involved in it. I guess it's a, it's a good lesson. My yes vote to overturn it is based on the marking of the curb instead of the tire, and if those are our normal procedures, I just encourage the police department to take that back and reinforce to our team that that's really important to do, or we have less credibility here, so. Well done.
Seven yes?
Item 55, on the conveyance of a license agreement at 1012 Oak Park Avenue, McHenry Park, to Quest Corporation, $200, and to continue to June 13th, 2011, at 5:00 PM. Council Communication Number 11-304. Guess the motion here is to continue to June 13th. Is there anybody here to speak to this? Seeing none, we have a motion to continue.
I'll move 55.
Seven yes?
Item 56, on Evergreen and Columbus Parks Basketball Court Improvements Resolution Improving the Plan's Specifications Form of Contract Documents Engineers Estimate Designating the Lowest Responsible Bitter as TK Concrete Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, President, for $53,950. A is approving the contract, the bond, and permission to sublet. Council Communication Number 11-306.
Good, good improvements here, and I'll move 56.
Seven yes?
Item 57, on the Tonawana Avenue Improvements Resolution Improving the Plan's Specifications Form of Contract Documents Engineers Estimate And to Receive and File the Bids. Council Communication Number 11-309.
I will move item 57 to receive and file this, but very disappointed, I had a chance to talk with Pat Kozicka before the council meeting. One question I do have, we do have $700,000 of I jobs in this, do we have a timeline that these need to be spent? Jeff, I guess. And it appears that we're gonna have to do it in phases, potentially, that's one of the options that's being looked at, and so is there the possibility that it would come back this construction season?
Mayor, members of council, Jeff Brewer, city engineer, on the I jobs grant, we have been in contact with the I jobs board and talked to them about what we should do on that. Our, our plan would be to try to go back, take another phase, and rebid it as soon as possible, which we want to preserve the, the I jobs grants really awarded under the expectations that we get this work done within a certain time period. And they were, said as long as we go back and get it out, so we're gonna award it this season, how much we could, you know, the summer, how much we can get done in the fall will really be weather dependent. We don't want to open up something we can't do, but the goal would be to award a, a smaller contract which would make use of all those I jobs funds this summer and start some work this fall.
Great, okay, very good, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've got two comments on this, Mayor. I'd like to point out, number one, that this, this area on Tonawana had been maintained by city employees for as long as I can remember, and not so long ago, the residents in there thought they wanted the nature of that ravine to be changed, and there was a circle drawn around it, and city employees were told to stay out of there, basically. I know there's several other mitigating factors to this, but that, in my opinion, is one of them, and I think that we need to allow our city employees to do their job and maintain areas so that we don't end up having to spend millions of dollars to repair the damage that's done. Secondly, this is a sewer project, it is non-assessed, we have a lot of streets in this city that do not have storm sewers. I would like staff to begin identifying those, and I think it's time we start putting in storm sewers where they're not, and that they should be non-assessed also.
So you'd like added to ask the staff to put together a list of some of those and, or all of them, and bring them back so we know what, what it is?
Oh, I think absolutely we should. I think we should start identifying around the city and begin getting those all taken care of.
Okay. Is that an amendment to Mrs. Hensley's motion? Or an addition?
If she'd accept it.
Oh, that's fine.
You know, I support Skip on this, because, you know, sooner or later, we need to address some of these issues that's been with us for a long time. We need to address the areas that's been out there and are put up with the, the problem of no storm sewers and that. So I'd like to see us start pro-rating maybe so many dollars a year to address some of these needs out there.
I, I agree. I also don't want to set expectations too high, so that maybe, maybe the first step is asking the city manager's office to kind of give us a scope of what this is. I mean, is it, is it $100 million? Is it, I mean, it could be a lot of money. I know on Beaver Avenue north of town, there's going to be a project underway there to do it there, and it's, you know, $2.8 million or something. I mean, and it's less than, it's about a half mile long, so I, I just want to make sure that people don't read too much into this. Do we have to get going? Yeah. Should we have a plan for it and reserve funds? Yes, but let's not make, let's make sure people understand how, how much appetite we have to actually do it.
Mayor and council, we'll have staff, engineering department, start to review that. As you've correctly identified, it's, it's a, a major undertaking of a magnitude that probably will, will, will not be able to be funded in the immediate timeframe. It's funded, obviously, from stormwater utility fees, as councilmen more appropriately recognize that we have not used assessments, because everyone pays a stormwater utility fee. But we can start with an initial review and give you a sense of the magnitude of what we're talking about, putting in stormwater infrastructure across the city.
I'll move, my motion there would be to move item 57 and have it come back as a workshop item in the future. Seems like that'd be a good workshop item.
You know, as an example, right off East 14th, Sheridan Avenue over there, they don't have storm sewers, they just got ditches alongside the road.
I think maybe we ought to have the mayor pro tem begin to start managing some of our council workshops, so we kind of know what's, what's coming up from time to time, and maybe we can push some of these along.
Let's not get too crazy now. I'm on it.
All right. You had a vote there? Seven oh, right? Okay, that brings our hearings to an end at 5:48, and it'll take us back to item 48, which is ordinance for first consideration. I will also say to the rest of the council, there has been a request by a person in the audience to bring back an item that she would like to speak on, item five. So we'll, if someone that, after we complete these items would do it, or would you rather take that up now?
Take it up now. I would take it up now. We know we have somebody here. I'll move to reconsider item five.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes the same? We will now hear item five. Item five is a consideration of a Class C liquor license for Forest Market at 2105 Forest Avenue. The zoning department recommends denial due to the failure to comply with Section 134-954.1, half of the gross revenue of the sale of food or food-related services. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, council members. My name's Valerie Kramer, I'm an attorney for Forest Market. I also have a certified public accountancy certificate from the University of Illinois. There was an audit done. It was not a certified audit, it was a compiled audit, and I'd like to give this to you. We did present it to the city, because a certified audit is usually reserved for Fortune 500 companies and for companies borrowing considerable amounts of money. And it's, it's overkill. Steve Baker prepared this, he's unable to attend tonight because of the short notice. It shows that 46% of the sales of Forest Market are liquor. The city has issued only a very few of these letters, and has not enforced it uniformly, has not sent letters out to everyone who has a crime problem, it's only sent it out to just several people, and I feel that my clients are being singled out. The other, the other businesses were not required to, to do certified audits, because the cost is really extreme and exorbitant. And we feel this is a licensing, an additional licensing scheme designed to cost someone more money in terms of licensing their business. The reason for it was because Forest Market is in a high crime area, and Forest Market did not cause the crime. They are in a high crime area, and there are problems with that area. My clients have called the police for police protection, and as a result, they've been penalized, because they're calling for protection, and that's one of the reasons they did the, they asked for a certified audit. And it's very unrealistic to demand a certified audit of some small business, in my opinion.
But this accountant's compilation report says we have not audited or reviewed the coming schedules.
It's a certified compilation. I mean, it's, it's not a certified compilation, it's not certified.
But they just take the information from the client and put it together, then?
What he did is, he, he took all the bank statements from the client and tied them in with the cash register receipts. There were three months of cash register receipts that were a problem. Out of 10 months, three months out of the 10 months, there were missing cash register receipts, so he couldn't certify the, he couldn't certify it.
Who's on, on about the third, well, it's, it says page two. Who's, who's handwritten notes are these?
Steve Baker, he's the CPA.
So the CPA wrote this note on?
Yes, he said the total deposits on the totals for the three months of April, May, and June, my client did not have certi, did not have receipts for those three months, not complete receipt, he only had some of them. So he, that's why he did not make, he couldn't do it certified. Plus, a certified audit requires someone to go in there and count all the bottles of liquor and anything like that.
We're familiar with that.
I, I move to reconsider it. Do you care if I ask her just a couple of quick questions, Mayor?
No, with that, but I think community development may want to make a couple of statements on this before we-
I, I appreciate this information. Mr. Mahaffey is much more solid in, in his financial background than I am, but I, I can tell you and represent that I think I know the difference between a compilation and an audit, and, and for those watching and wondering why we might be dismissive of this, is the auditor writes this inform, that our compilation was limited to presenting in the form of the financial information, information that is the representation of management of the client. An audit goes in and samples specific transactions in order to come up with a conclusion that it was done accurately. That's the difference between a compilation and an audit. There was no sampling, there was nothing to make sure that the representation was supported by the documentation. It's just a, it's a financial statement, which doesn't mean it's a bad financial statement, but it, it, in, in no way whatsoever sways the vote that I took earlier before you were here to, to deny the liquor license. Did you have any other information you wanted us to know? Because I would like to hear from Mr. Delafield.
Yeah, what happened was, is we provided him with all the bank statements, and it turns out that the bank statements had more deposits for those three months than we had receipts. So that's why he had to qualify. You know, the receipts, he went through every receipt for 10 months with, and coming up short was three months worth of receipts. So he couldn't qualify it, but if you did averages-
Okay. We appreciate your, your statements here. Ms. Hensley, do you want to ask her a question?
I, I just want to make a statement, though, because I don't want her to walk away and have her think that we don't understand this. You know, they've got sales of $732,000. 95% of the nonprofits in the city of Des Moines are required to have an audit. If you have a business that has sales of $732,000 and they can't afford an audit, I'd really have questions. I just do not agree with what's being presented here, and I will stand by-
Well, I, I, I work with a nonprofit, too, and they cannot afford, they don't do audit financial statements.
Well, we appreciate your statements, and you've said that a couple, three times. I'm gonna ask Mr. Delafield to please kind of update us on, on the zoning department's recommendation here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Phil Delafield, Community Development Director. Our staff, working with finance staff, have, has reviewed the information presented. As you have correctly identified, we felt that there was information there that was lacking. We did not have a comfort level with what we were seeing and felt it was inappropriate for us to offer a recommendation that was supportive of their action. As to the point of whether or not other firms, other stores are being asked to audit, it is correct that we have requests out for others. We are now in the process of auditing two other convenience stores for the same issue. Those are generated on a complaint basis, and we investigate when there's sufficient evidence to suggest that it needs a look. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I don't-
Thank you.
Kelly?
Would, I don't know that we need any more discussion. I'm gonna make a motion to uphold the denial. I, I think your client knows full well what the requirements of having a C license are when they apply for a C license, and to say in hindsight that they can't comply with, with the rules just seems not right to me. So I'm gonna make a motion to uphold the denial.
I agree, and I hope the record shows that we return to this agenda item so that- I agree and I hope the record shows that we return to this agenda item so that she could have a chance to, you know, make her most convincing argument on behalf of her client and we gave her that opportunity.
Thank you.
Seven yes?
Item 48, which is a, an ordinance consideration, first consideration, amending chapter two of the municipal code, establishing a grievance procedure under the Americans with Disabilities Act, Council Communication number 11-338A is the final consideration. The ordinance above the waiver is requested by the city manager's office and requires six votes. Anybody here to speak on this item?
Move 48 and 48A.
Seven yes?
Item 49, amending chapter 1114 of the municipal code regarding the traffic regulation changes as follows, Council Communication number 11-310A, petition to allow parking southeast 5th Street between Jackson and Livingston Avenue, B, removal of a school sign east 9th Street and Cleveland Avenue, and C, request for two-hour parking limit, 1,900 block of Ingersoll Avenue. Anybody here to speak to any of these items?
I'll move 49, A, B, and C, and request the non-prepublished second and third reading.
Seven yes?
Item 50, amending chapter 70 of the municipal code regarding swimming in a river or other unsupervised place, Council Communication number 11-325A is the final consideration. The ordinance above the waiver is requested by the city manager and requires six votes. Would you quickly update the public, Mr. Acting Manager, on what we're doing here?
Mayor, members of council, this is an exception to allow our Parks and Recreation Director to approve swimming in areas that currently are not allowed on an exception basis and I believe it's related to some specific events coming up this fall. If.
Is this the triathlon?
Don Tripp would like to speak. He may. Excuse me, Candy Rindl.
Mayor and Council, Candy Rindl, Assistant to the City Manager. The specific event that will be taking place is the Hy-Vee triathlon on September 4th of this year and this is, amendment to the ordinance is required, so we will allow the elite participants, who are the professionals, to swim in the Des Moines River. And they'll be swimming from the Grand Avenue Bridge to the Court Avenue Bridge and back.
And back?
They'll do two laps. They're actually going to be start diving off the, they'll be building a platform off the amphitheater, diving into the river, swimming up to the Grand Avenue Bridge, turning around, swimming to the Court Avenue Bridge, and then back, and then they'll come back on the platform again, dive off, and do another lap.
This is for the professionals?
This is the professionals. These are 30 men, 30 women.
When you said that to the mayor, didn't you mean you will be diving off the platform?
If he's one of the 30 men invited.
We spent a decade listening to his swimming prowess at Iowa State and Roosevelt. I would think with the.
You were telling that story. Anybody told it? I haven't said a word about it.
He's the grand marshal of the triathlon.
I think you'll be like the pace car for the, legally, you could swim in the river finally and you're not going to.
Somebody have a motion.
And they'll all be signing waivers, right?
Yes, definitely.
That's a heck of a swim.
Yeah. They may find some of the fish in there about as big as they are.
Seven yes?
All right, that completes the ordinances on consideration. The next is a communication report from one of our old friends, Dan Dusenberry, of 25 East First Street, to speak regarding automated external defibrillators, AED, in Des Moines police cars. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you. I don't remember the last time I was here. I lost my memory for about five days before my death and about two weeks after it, so I just have to look at the pictures to remember being here.
Well, you were here, I want you to know, and you're, we are thankful for your reincarnation.
Oh, thank you. For all the people that don't know me, my name's Dan Dusenberry. I was a Des Moines police officer for 38 years, seven months, and 15 days. 18 work hours before I planned to retire, I suffered a sudden cardiac arrest while I was on duty. Cardiologist estimated that I was dead for approximately five minutes. Two fellow police officers and six firemen received one of Des Moines Police Department's highest awards for performing CPR and delivering shocks to my heart with a automated, automated, automatic external defibrillator, known to most people as an AED. Their efforts and the knowledge to use, to the use of AED have enabled me to come and speak to you and lead a much different life since that time. My proposal is to provide AEDs for 80 Des Moines police cars so that other people can have the opportunity to live. AED.com states that approximately 400,000 people in the U.S. die each year from sudden cardiac arrest. Survival rates for out-of-hospital arrests are only 1% to 5%. However, immediate AED use can increase survival to more than 90%. For each minute that defibrillation is delayed, 10% fewer victims survive. One thing that I've learned in the research that I've done since my incident is that with heart attacks and other medical problems, you have some indication that if you, symptoms or an indication, if you don't change the way you're living, you're going to die from a problem. But with sudden cardiac arrest, there's no symptoms. You can be a very active athlete, a person that appears to be impervious by condition, old, young, anything, and die from a sudden cardiac arrest. Cardiac Science states that the staggering and largely preventable death toll from sudden cardiac arrest has prompted a national movement to place AEDs in every public safety vehicle in America. In December of 2006, the Iowa Department of Public Health stated, "Research indicates that one of the most effective methods to implement early defibrillation is by providing local law enforcement with training and AEDs." Departments equipped with in-car AEDs include Orlando and Miami Dade Police, Kansas and Nevada Highway Patrols, Michigan State Police, Oklahoma sheriffs, locally, Polk County sheriffs, Indianola Police, Sioux City, Cedar Rapids, several others. And my proposal is the purchase of AED units from Cardiac Science at a cost of $1,295 each for a total cost of $103,000. And that's about $97,000 under the original proposal, something that came about from the director, regional director of Red Cross for Health and Safety saw a TV presentation and where we had estimated the cost to be about $200,000 in total and said, "I think I can help you out here." And he brought our cost down by $97,000, so that's a big step right there.
For the same, for the same unit, Dan?
For a better unit, actually.
Okay.
It's for a unit that the military uses in the Black Hawk helicopters in Afghanistan and Iraq. And so it'll probably stand up to the weather conditions that Des Moines has as well as the punishment that cops put equipment through. Let's see, with the help, you know, I've talked to a lot of people about this. Since I died a little over a year ago, I decided that this was one of the things that God wanted me to do and why he let me stay around here a little longer. So I've talked to so many people. I talked to the mayor. I talked to the chief. I've talked to all kinds of people. And, you know, originally I wanted to go to companies and say, "Hey, write a check for this. You know, it'll be great." And the mayor said, "Hey, you really need to come to our citizens and say, you know, help us out. Help yourself out." You know, have some ownership in this. And I'm not asking the city for any money. I'm not asking the police department for any money. I'm asking people that live in Des Moines. I'm asking people that work in Des Moines. I'm asking people that drive through Des Moines, that come visit us. I'm asking family, people that have family members that fit into any one of these categories to donate them money. And you don't need to donate $1,300 yourself. Hell, I can't afford $1,300 to donate. And I see, somebody's watching the clock over here. She promised she'd dang it for five minutes. But, you know, if everybody gave 10 bucks, what, you know, we could buy 100 of these things with all the people that we have that fit into those categories. And the chief recommended that I go through the burial association for donations because then it would be, people could take it as a tax deductible donation because of their, how they're set up. And I got ahold of them and they were, thought this was a great idea and they helped me out. So all I'm asking you is to help me get the word out to as many people as I can and to post on your website where they can send in money and help me out. And it's through the, it's Des Moines Police Burial Association and they have to put down AED funds so we get the money instead of another part of the burial and so that it's tax deductible. And it's through the Des Moines Police Officers Credit Union at 423 East Court Avenue in Des Moines. And, you know, I just, I'm 1 of 5%. I'm in a small club. I'm 1 of 5% people that are still alive and I'd like to see 90%. I'd like to see it go to 90%, 85% more people could join me. Every day for me is a miracle.
Dan, thank you very, very much and appreciate your presentation and we'll be happy to help you out and put it up, but more than anything else, it's good to see you here.
Thank you.
It is great to see you.
I'm looking forward to coming back here in not too long and saying, "Hey, we were able to buy some of these and present them to you folks and to the chief and say, hey, you know." It gives, cops don't like to go someplace and stand there and look at somebody and know they can't help them and see them die. You know, I did that and it's a tough thing to do. And to be able to have the equipment that's available to save somebody's life, that's a hell of a feeling to save somebody's life.
You're right.
There are a lot of neighborhood associations that, you know, struggle to get by, but there's some that do quite well and these would be roaming around in their neighborhood inside a police officer's car that's serving them. I think of that because I know all of us are out talking to groups and so forth and maybe, Alan, one way we could help is maybe from, somebody from our public information office, our print people could, you know, draw up a little flyer or something that each of us could have, you know, a handful of them to walk around with and share with people. I think my neighborhood association, for instance, might take a lot of pride in helping to fund one that might be there in their neighborhood. It might be just, and maybe there's 10 other neighborhoods that would like to do the same over time to help get this done.
I would put it in the City Source. I'd put an article in City Source. I think, you know, that would go out to everybody if we could just, you know, tell them your story, just summarize it and have an article in there and ask, you know, for the $5 and $10 and, you know, that's going to, how many tens of thousands of citizens within the city?
Let's put it up on the website.
Yeah.
Anybody down here? All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, let's have a motion to do all those things. All in favor say aye.
Yeah, I'll move all that. We, last time Dan was here, we gave him a nice honor and thank you for your years of service here and we're glad you're back and happy to honor you again today with a motion to make some things happen through the city manager's office and with all of us, so thank you.
It's a pleasure to see you all again and I don't miss being where Officer Lovejoy is. It's nice to see your new person here. Thank you very much.
All right, that moves us to the end of those. Let's go to the item 58, which is approving, an exception to a competitive procurement process and approving an administrative services-only agreement with Wellmark, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield of Iowa to provide claims administration for employee and retiree health plans from July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012, Council Communication number 11-332. Anyone in the audience to speak on this? We had lengthy discussion on this this morning, but does council have any additional thoughts?
I was the one asking all the questions this morning, so, and I've had a chance to.
Your partner there, Ms. Coleman, was busy too, so we're all.
I'm feeling more comfortable with it. I just hope that, you know, we stay self-insured. I think the time is right for us to go forward with that. I think there've been some changes made and probably the most telling comment this morning was when you said that Wellmark was supportive of us going self-insured and that says a lot, so I would be happy to move item 58.
Before I vote, at least, I do have one question and that is that I ask about some wellness incentive kind of stuff and I guess where we're prepared to take that and how the council might hear about that, especially if there's, you know, important employee-related things that we might have to take action on.
Mayor and council, I think one of the initiatives that we want to undertake is to probably make our wellness committee a little more robust and to be a little more aggressive in developing a wellness program. We have a wellness committee, but it hasn't, as was mentioned by James this morning, hasn't been tremendously effective, but we will make a concerted effort to try to enhance that and to involve more employees moving forward. I think the HR department has some specific ideas that can be vetted with the employees and really, as been mentioned previously, you know, wellness efforts really start from the top down. We have to communicate to the employees that we think it's important and that all of the advantages of it, obviously related to productivity and just quality of life, both here at work and at home.
Thank you.
And I will say, from my part, I served about two years on our insurance committee and with one of our former council members and all of our labor representatives and it was quite an educational experience and look forward to the reports and working with our city staff to implement this plan. I think it's a great opportunity and I think the council deserves to have regular updates on where we are and the, in the process and the plan and fulfilling all the commitments and how the process is working. Because I think that the reports that we got earlier in the day are very, very encouraging and point to a strong success in this plan, but I think that the council needs to be continually updated. Thank you.
Seven yes?
59, an exception to competitive procurement process for the fiscal years 2012 and 13, approving renewal of agreement with Delta Dental of Iowa for administrative services related to the city's self-insured dental plan for employees and certain retirees and authorizing staff to negotiate rates for fiscal years 2012 and 13 with the approval of the city manager. Council Communication number 11-332. Council Communication Number 11-331.
Mayor and Council, we didn't really get to speak to the Delta Dental item at this morning's workshop. Unlike our health insurance, our dental coverage program has been a self-insured program for as long as I can remember, which is 30 years and counting. We went through an RFP process last year and awarded to Delta Dental. There were some-- quite a few advantages with them. The primary one was, though, that the prices were about 10% less than what we had been experiencing. We are looking at renewing for this year with a 0% increase in our fixed administrative fees. We continue to enjoy, as we've researched our actual experience compared to what was proposed when we went through the RFP, and that has materialized.
Excellent.
Well, from experience, I know it isn't good to go out for bids each year because those who don't get it, they all got costs involved in putting the information together, and then it just-- after a while, they don't get it, they don't want a bid anymore, so I think this is good. Did you get a motion on this?
Uh-uh.
I have moved it, Tim.
Seven, yes?
All right, item 60, receive and file the Trails and Greenways Advisory Committee Recommendation of the Bicycle and Trail Master Plan as an element of the 2020 Community Character Plan, Council Communication Number 11-314. Anyone here to speak on that item? We have a motion.
Move. Seven, yes?
Item 61, demunition of employees in the Des Moines Housing Services Department, Council Communication Number 11-334.
I'll move it. I want to compliment Doug and all that's going on in the municipal housing area, both divisions. It's really good stuff, and I think we're more poised to serve people well than we did before with the reduction of costs, so well done, Doug.
My understanding is they'll cover all the areas, but you just have to have an appointment to get in to see a person you need to talk to as far as your low-rent housing and needs for the-- those who need help with their utility bills and that. Did you move it, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, but you could if you wanted to.
No, go ahead.
Seven, yes?
All right. If we could have a motion to adjourn the City Council and reconvene as Board of Health. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. We now sit as the Board of Health. Item 1 is a-- to approve the Legal Department to proceed with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at 1933 Capitol Avenue. It's a main structure. Is there anybody here to speak on this item?
Move.
Item's been moved. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. And we have a-- our Assistant City Manager has a quick announcement.
Just as a reminder to you, Wednesday, we have a special council meeting to consider a bond sale for our capital improvements program that starts July 1st. It also includes a refinancing of some debt. We anticipate we'll certainly meet our target, we believe, in our-- for our savings. We just had a notification from Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. They review and reviewed and affirmed our ratings for Moody's as AA1 and Standard &amp; Poor's as AAA. We just got that information in the last day or two. Wanted to forward that on to you, and we can provide the specific reports to you Wednesday on the date of the sale.
Great.
All right. Thank you for the update. Could we have a motion adjourned? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
We sit adjourned. Thank you all for coming.